And referenced about 10 million funds coming online to the affordable housing trust. And I just, page 62, we have 10.25 million coming into the trust. So are those permanent projects or are those projections, knowing what we have in the pipeline? I guess for this document's purposes, I was just trying to drill down to that number because I know we've looked at, we've worked through the permitting of some of these in the pipeline and then in the structure. Of course, it's still what's in the bank. So can you speak to that?
Yeah, that's some of the projections.
It's a projection.
That is a projection.
Okay. I want to say we had about 3 million current funds and our permanent funds are probably, what would you?
Well, as of the last meeting approximately 2.5 million.
That we know is in the pipeline?
Well, that was in the fund currently. In the projection, it's actually since increased from 10 to probably 14.
Okay.
In terms of projected projects that are permanent that are on a schedule to be made into the trust.
I was looking through and had kind of this all dashed out. I see we're up against the clock. Other thing I think Councilman Finn talked about, you know, at Sunset and in our opportunity with the Home by Housing Authority, would they not be under legal to retain them into the housing stock? I guess I was confused. Do you want to just speak on that?
Sure.
Because I was expecting that to be, I think it was in Councilor Crowell's project, just neighbor works, Friday building. So when I saw that 361 unit number with the sunset date, in my mind, those levers we were talking about, and Councilor Finn made a good point, so.
Yeah, I think it's important to, so for organizations such as the Housing Authority or other, and other mission-driven organizations, those organizations are either obligated to or often do themselves proactively seek to increase affordability.
Okay. On the other, to the point of Housing Authority, you referenced page 72. The city has an opportunity to develop on housing authority land. Would we have that jurisdiction or what would, what would an agreement like that? I mean, obviously that's a long conversation today, but I thought it was an interesting opportunity because I just rolled back the chart. Page 33 is the projected housing units needed and what's needed where. And jumping off the charts to me is single family saying that 1270 is what should be additional 1270 units before 2020. The timeline is 2017 to 2020, we're approaching 2020. Obviously, I can see appetite of downtown with a lot of multifamily, the periphery of downtown, the other residence beach. And a lot of references to what we're seeing happening in the residence beach, you've got a multifamily house being torn down, it being built out to optimize rezoning. And so I was just curious about if we had, what your thoughts were on opportunities for single family? Because we look at some housing protection in Good Valley and thought of like the city with very strong single family home market, yet I don't see the landscape to build out 1270 homes. So that was something that jumped off to me.
We have resources. Single families can be used for both rental and homeownership. Obviously, single families are geared towards homeownership. And, you know, that's something that we will explore is looking at single family residences and how we make those de-structured in future.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're saying, I took this as not particularly affordable, this, this in units, housing unit structure. If you want, yeah, I think this chart is what the NIPC was saying, the housing growth was needed in one specific area.
Oh, I see.
We're saying like 2020, it talks about a stronger region, in 2020 stronger region. It's saying multifamily ownership 980, multifamily rentals 1800, single family ownership 1270. And then tallying our total units of 4049 as far as housing growth in the area.
I see. So the new production.
Move back.
And that trend is, it's out of page 32, 33.
The city does have open space, we must be taking a look at open space parcels development. We must be taking a look at either undeveloped parcels rezoning. I guess that's what I was looking for the strategy.
I think what that's getting to more of is essentially as households move out of single families that creates supply and per single.
It's more turnover than creation.
Yes, yes. It's more turnover than actual creation of new communities.
Okay. One thing that we talked about is a lot of our districts is aging in place and part of rezoning. That I've heard from families is about in-law apartments, right? So you don't want to be taking a single family, burning it to back in the day, the residence, a single family potentially tear down. And people are looking to optimize and create a two-family, the appetite was not for that. But there's that appetite maybe for the in-law apartment. What if it's for the in-law to age in place and comment, I think there's been socialists done a lot with comment injuries working around that. But I think that is something that I've seen is a need for housing, for keeping people. I think Councilor Crowell talked about, it's people saying that that was something that I'm seeing right coming to the inside. Another thing about the affordable housing is creation of family units. So Quincy Housing Authority, property in Germantown, there's a substantial amount of their, their family, their family units. And however, people project me as saying, okay, you know, for housing, a solution, a affordable solution, that the weakness for Quincy housing is global, isn't how it is no longer. Because of their funding, maybe who's explaining, it's not priority for Quincy residents. If you're Quincy residents, you're going to have list, it's proven to anybody. So even though it's Quincy Housing Authority for housing in Quincy, there's definitely a strong demand for family housing, affordable units, for public housing as well as for non-public housing. But that's something that I'm here very regularly, particularly on the need for public housing and, you know, low money for family housing. And I think, great. More so on the payment of versus units. I think we have some more to do with affordable housing trust on that. And I wanted just to give a shout out and surprise, not seeing in the audience, but in particular, the community action and neighbor works of the Chuchodos, the work within our community. And they have more so on neighbor works for their clear creation of affordable units. They are saving the project of the Sunset units. They really truly should be commended for their work in helping us maintain our status. I wish they had more, more housing. I look forward to having the opportunity to help you develop stuff.
Well said, Council.
Well said.
Thank you very much. There's a motion on the floor to move a pool on the housing production plan. Any further discussion from members of the committee? See now, all those in favor? Both? Okay, I just have a little revisit this subsequently at the end of the city council meeting. Clear the housing committee adjourned at 7:30. Thank you.
I would like to call to order this meeting of the Quincy City Council, October 17th, 2016. If the clerk could please call the board.
Council King.
President.
Council Paul.
President.
Council Paul.
President.
Council Dan.
Present.
Council Harris, present. Council Forrest. Council Lee.
Present.
Council Hamid, present. Council Gish.
I would like to note that the president is on her way, but she did ask if we could start, if I could start the meeting this evening. So I, again, I'd like to invite you to stand and join in a moment of silence. In a prayer of high inspiration, particularly to remember all of those serving our country, particularly with everything that's happening this evening in Iraq. Those people who are serving overseas, those serving at home, that we keep them in our hearts and prayers. Thank you. I invite you to join me in a pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, or our nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all. Madam clerk, if you could read this slave over to the open meeting room.
Pursuant to the open meeting room, any person may make an audio or video recording of the public meeting or may transmit the meeting to a medium. Attempts of the accorded by the structured recordings or transmissions of these meetings, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, in identity knowledge, impermissible.
Thank you. On the first item on our agenda, Madam clerk.
First item on the agenda is a recognition of a festival of Diwali.
Thank you. If I could, I would ask Councilor Forrest to take the chair. Madam Chair, thank you. My colleagues on the city council, thank you all as well. Again, it's an interesting symbol. The symbols of light and darkness are some of the most ancient religious symbols that go across all religious faiths. And they tend to symbolize the ultimate human hope and belief in good over evil. And I think those sentiments, given everything that's going on in the world, are very strong and powerful sentiments to have. And I take great pleasure, and many of you are probably Quincy guys or gals, born and reared in Quincy. I wasn't, I grew up in a very different type of place. But the one thing that always amazed me about Quincy was its openness as it related to interfaith, to different groups, cultures, religious expressions, and that in one city, you have so many different religious cultures and traditions and communities coming together and living, not based on the things that they disagree about, not based on their various theologies, but based about the things they agree upon. That they agree that it's good to have a safe, vibrant, vital community in which to raise their children. That it's good to have a place where one can pursue liberty, the pursuit of happiness, to develop comfortable living and hope that they might be able to pass on to their children a life that is better, better than their own. This has marked the city of Quincy for a very long time. There are Islamic families, for example, in Quincy that go back three generations in our city. Many came in and working in the shipyard many years ago. We have represented within the community, various groups, denominations of the Christian faith, Jewish faith, Muslim, Hindu, Buddhist, and a wide variety of different forms of religious expression. And I think that that's one great thing about our society with the separation of church and state, is that in reality, it doesn't discourage religious sentiment at all, but it brings us all together in a civic spirit, an ability to live together, to drive forward the values that we all think are important. And so it's a great honor here for me this evening to be able to point out a very significant event that will be happening in Cuba on October 29th, the 30th. It is one of the most important festivals in the eastern religious world. It's the celebration of Diwali. It celebrates the triumph of light over darkness, good over evil. And it's celebrated worldwide by more than a billion followers of Hinduism, Sikhism, and Jainism. And again, it's marked with a religious ceremony of light, pretty much. In fact, the literal translation of Diwali means a necklace of lights. But also, in terms of our Indian-American community living here and throughout the United States, in many cases, this is the most significant of all their religious holidays. And they've been working very hard to have it recognized by the U.S. Postal Service in the form of a stamp. And they have been successful. And it's to commemorate just as we do other holidays like Hanukkah, Wands, and Christmas and Eve. So again, I thought this would be a twofold opportunity this evening. One, to wish the best for those Indian-Americans living within our community and to wish them the best as they celebrate this holiday in this festival for them and for their families. And that it might, again, bring them good fortune as well. But secondly, I thought it was an important time to recognize someone who's made us all very aware of these interfaith issues and to work with various communities, building understanding for various traditions and cultures. But also, somebody put a lot of work into making that stamp a reality. I think I don't have to introduce you, but Umu Batta, Puma, if you'd like to come forward at this point in time. She does nothing small. She got us the stamp so that you could see the commemorative stamp. She actually, I don't think there's any ethics issues here, but she's actually gifted all of us with a small little lamp. It's used during the ceremony of Diwali as a token for you to have. And she's also included some Indian treats that are back, that are customary during this holiday, when it's celebrated. So thank you, Umu, for all your efforts on the aspect of religious understanding in our community of working together. But it's with that, I present you this citation from the Quincy City Council, and it reads, "In recognition of your work in the Hindu community creating interfaith dialogues throughout the city of Quincy and promoting the U.S. Postal Service commemorating the festival of Diwali, the Hindu festival of lights with a forever stamp." Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to share this festival with the rest of the community. And also, I'd like to thank the Quincy City Council, Mayor Cole, and also Nina for helping me bring this stamp here today and, you know, sharing a little bit of what this festival means to a bunch of young people. Actually, he said everything I was going to say, so I'm going to, you know, I'm going to just read what I have. Just very quickly, Diwali is a festival of light and it signifies light over darkness. And the way the story goes is that there was a king a long time ago, he's not, not in Parvania, and he had three wives. Those days, they could have a twin wife, I think. So he had three wives and he was going to make the son of his old, his first wife, the next king. So the second wife, you know, of course, was delighted and she said to him, because he had won her a boon because she had saved his wife one time, and he said, you can ask her anything, anytime that you want. So she comes up to him and said, it's my time for the boon and I want my son to be the king and not this person. And I want you to banish this son of yours to the forest for 14 years so that people will forget that he wins this. That was not a nice thing to do, but, you know, the king was forced to grant that wish. So this prince, Prince Ram, Lord Ram, his wife, Sita, and his brother went to the jungle for 14 years. They lived there. And at that time, at one point, he was a very bad king in a place called Nangkram, which actually today is Sri Lanka. That's another name. So he abducted this wife of his and then Lord Ram had to go to Nangkram, fight him, bring his wife back. And after 14 years, when they came back to the kingdom, all the people in the kingdom were so happy that they lit their houses with lights. And so that's how this festival came about, this festival. He defeated that bad guy, he got his wife back. So that's, that's what the story is and that's why it's called Diwali, which is festival of lights. And while I was doing this, it just reminded me that when I was in eighth grade, we depicted this whole thing at the drama school. And I was one of those people from the kingdom who were welcoming this king and this prince back. So it was a lot of fun. So this is celebrated, you know, we celebrate by, it's just like Christmas, you know, we give gifts, we wear new clothes, we exchange sweet things to eat, and that's what I have. And these little lamps that I gave you, basically traditionally you put it with oil in a, in a blink and you light it. It's like a candle, you put a candle. But these days, people use lighter, upgraded tea lights. It's just, it's very nice. It decorates your whole house. And so coming to the, coming to the stamp, as Joe was saying, it's been many, many years that the Indian community has been trying for the U.S. Postal Service to issue a stamp because there's stamp for Kwanzaa, for Christmas, you know, for Eve. We didn't have one for Diwali. So and at this, and at this point, I would like to thank Congressman Lynch because he was a ranking member on the postal subcommittee and he wrote a letter of kind of quest to the U.S. Postmaster General back in 2012, giving all the statistics as to why we should issue a stamp. So finally, you know, we have a stamp and believing in our day, and we had this stamp on our group of fifth and senior council in New York. And I was there and within the first day of issue, 100,000 stamps had already been sold in the United States of the stamp. So you can see how eager people were waiting, you know, for nations of the stamp. The postal, the U.S. P.S. in D.C. gets about 40,000 suggestions a year for ideas for stamps. And then 25 are selected by the staff at YJ Company and given to the Postmaster General to pick, to pick the team for the year. So, so, you know, we're really glad that they picked this survey, this story thing for, not just the Indian community, but, you know, Hindu, Jains, Sikhs who celebrate Diwali all over the world. I think, okay, I think that's about, that's about what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
We can have a brief recess to take a picture of the wealth of the management. Thank you.
Come on, local events. Come on, are you local Diwali events?
Oh.
Need a quick ethics rule in here.
Sure.
I would like to call back to order, me and the Quincy City Council. And with the clerk had said, the president did request a motion to let it was delay that if we could move the first item, item one, until she's here, since it's her order that she's bringing in. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next item, Madam clerk.
Number two on the agenda, 2016 dash 247, order homeless petition, adoption of corrective language, January 32nd of the Act of 2011, an act facilitating urban redevelopment in the city of Quincy.
Thank you, Madam clerk. The motions in terms of, motion to move to committee, Chair recognizes Councilor Lloyd.
Oh, thank you. I was going to make a question.
That's fine, I'll tell you, as well as the board.
The second from Councilor Palmucci. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that is referred to the downtown committee. And ordinance.
Perhaps through you, Mr. Stanley, President. I think Bill Geiger from the mayor's office will prepare to make some brief comments about that.
Oh, no, please, excuse me. Would you, again, thank you. Good to be here. Good to see you there.
That's fine, all right. Mr. President brought ten through yesterday. I, I'm always delighted when a motion can pass without me speaking because sometimes the best thing to say is not. But the matter is before you, I've had the opportunity to communicate with all of you through email and pleased to receive responses and standing ready to answer any questions. I know it's assigned to the committee and hearing date will be scheduled. And of course, I will be present to provide any additional information as required. But the rationale for the petition, that's before the council, was stated in a mayor's message and convey the language to the, to the council. It seeks to correct a situation that arose as a result of the termination of the previous designated developer for the downtown known as Streetlights. The language for many legislation would in essence simply restore world petition, as embodied in Chapter 32 of 2011, are essential tools for the city to move forward with plans to redevelop the Hancock and Ross lots, beginning with the Hancock lot. So that, in brief, is the rationale for the petition as submitted. And as I said, I will be more than delighted to provide additional information to the council individually and to the body as a whole when it schedules the hearing on the matter.
Well, first up, Mr. Geiger, let me take this opportunity to thank you for the time and the manner in which you do get specific information to us, it's deeply appreciated. And I also think that, I particularly appreciate the level of communication you have with the Chair of the committee when it comes to pointing this out, because I think that leads to a great deal of understanding. So at the time of the public hearing, and when we actually, this comes up for debate, I think you have a very good sense of what issues need to be addressed. So thank you so much for the time and the fashion.
Thank you, sir.
And I also appreciate all the work that you put into developing the red line version. And I know that work, you did that work with our Counselor Jim Shea, and that's, that's a very great way of getting us to understand exactly what you're doing. So I know you put great deal of work into that as well, so thank you.
Well, thank you, and it was very helpful to collaborate with Mr. Shea, because as you know, he was present previously, I was not. So his guidance and input was very helpful in preparing the language, as well as the red line, blue line, so that the council has an easy way to see in vivid graphic form the changes that are made. The key here in making these proposed changes is that they are technical corrections to an existing law, as distinguished from making new law. It's intended to endow the city with the tools that were previously granted to it, and unfortunately, those, we were unable to use those tools once the previous designated master developer was terminated. And hopefully, as adopted in URT number four, number four by this council, as we proceed on project by project developments with more than one designated developer, we'll be able to employ those same tools with them.
And then, again, a point made up here again and again is that, you know, the last home world petition really was a private deal, and specifically been nayed, whereas this home world petition and the amendments we're making, hopefully, is achieving the ability to deal with each of these deals as they come forward and to work with that. And, you know, as, again, as those deals begin to form, it would be great to make sure that that level of communication, particularly with the Chair, is there, so that we have a good sense of that.
Absolutely. Counselor Liang has been quite diligent in tracking me down wherever I may be.
While you're in America.
To communicate and to educate. And when I say educate, I'm not, that's a two-way street. I've been able to grasp a number of important points because of the discussions with Counselor Liang.
Well, thank you, and we have a motion again that's been referred
Thank you.
To both our consents about
Counselor Paluji.
To the Downtown Committee, and at the end of the meeting, we've scheduled a public hearing as well. Take your time. I think that's the, 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 the. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Number three on the agenda, 2016-248, Order Clockrizing the MTA's Air Rights Over Its North Quincy Transportation Facilities.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Counselor Harris.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion if this goes to committee. And non-motion.
Second.
I'd like, I'd like to just speak, speak to this, with respect to the opposing's air rights and North Quincy station, I've met with some of the folks proposing some of the ideas that possibly could go forward in that, in that, at Quincy Station. I know firsthand that the developers are good, are good people, big record, with good reputations. But before, before I can even think of going forward with this, it obviously will go through, at this group, this is obviously going to go through a community meeting, a community meeting that I know of the concerns of the folks of my ward and of the city, and that's the traffic situation. All I'm hearing right now is develop, we're developing, we're developing, we're developing. We need to come up with a strong viable plan that improves traffic flow, which will also improve the, which improves infrastructure. In the upcoming council meetings, you'll hear from me some of my ideas that will work with the city and the developers, who hope to move forward with projects in our city, which will improve the traffic situation for all Quincy residents who commute to work on a daily basis. My thoughts and the thoughts of folks a lot smarter than I have come up with, with ideas that I think can help us. And in my ward, the commuter traffic, really, it, it comes from more than just the folks who live in Quincy. We don't have a backup on the Ford River Bridge at home. We have a backup on the Quanzaa Bridge. So I would be proposing a plan, hopefully with the developers' help, that will be able to maybe slow down the traffic and force the state to help our city with, with the way in and through our, our city, through our different wards, for our folks who, including myself, and I'm not going to stand from talking, I commute every day, and all I hear is, it's the same nightmare. And I don't believe that the city should start developing, because we can't figure out the traffic situation. So I thank the developers, for the city, but especially the state, for staying in, in order to come up with a plan that will improve the quality of life for folks who are living in Quincy, especially in my ward, my ward who, who is at the Quanzaa Bridge, who is taking people a shorter period of time to go to work, who live on the other side of the Ford River Bridge. And that is not acceptable. So we need to figure it out, and moving forward, I believe in some of the things that I saw with the air rights situation, the plans, it looks like a tremendous, beautiful project of change the face of, of North Quincy and in that area. And I certainly would not want that to be prevented, because the community wouldn't be for it unless we have a good traffic plan put in place. And thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. The Chair recognizes Counselor King.
Thank you. Just a question, which committee is this going to? And I would hope that the mayor's representative could collaborate a little bit on this, just talking a little bit about the transit oriented districts. I'm with you of a traffic issue, we need to improve traffic before we do the dollar, but I'm just kind of wondering how that pertains to this ordinance.
Mr. Walker.
Three moves, Ken. It does counsel and it doesn't at the same time, I think. The item that's after this on the agenda is the middle of new transit oriented development zoning, global aid district for three stations in the city, inclusive of North Quincy, Wallston, and Quincy Adams. What this ordinance would do was, will be similar to what we've tried to do with the downtown, is create property framework that's predictable, streamlines, and promotes the kind of development closest to our development hubs, the kind of development that we want as a community. It makes the planning partners the lead agency, as it does, as it is in downtown, and it creates a number of other provisions that we'll certainly discuss when it gets to committee. The two, it's, the mayor's thought was we should have this ordinance in place for all of our T-stations, in anticipation that when we have one that's ready to be discussed publicly with the community, a community meeting in the very near future, we do expect over the next three, four, five years, that all of the other T-stations are going to see similar proposals. The T, in the last several years, in the last several months, really, has become quite serious in its determination to essentially get out of the real estate business and starting using some of this property to maximize some revenue for the table, and also create new economic growth in the air rights that they have at their properties. And we have four of those in Quincy, one of them is already taken care of by the downtown zoning, and it's our thought that the rest of them should have a similar, hopefully, district.
So in which committee is this going to? Orness, I guess.
Orness.
I believe that, I mean, again, we want to make certain, this is a discussion of the whole body in relation to it. I think one of the things that, and again, I definitely agree with certain aspects of what Mr. Harris is raising, some of the critical issues or components. But one of the things specifically where we have a, a beginning of a development, obviously, in one particular area, what, what are the implications, what's related, how does that relate specifically to that project? But if we come and bring this into committee, and I'm, you know, but obviously, I hope people can tell that I actually used to prepare for this job by my performance tonight, but the, what I'm hoping is that you'll be able to give us, again, some knowledge or understanding about what us passing this does to the rest of our approval role in relation to the, to the development of those particular problems.
Counselor, if the question is, and I was going to talk about this when you came up, I'm not sure if this
I think
Is there a title that, that if the question is about relative to what the council overall is, when it comes to the air rights project, that remains entirely unchanged
Great, good.
Through the zoning ordinance. As you know, the council and the mayor both have a requirement with Special Act of 1967 to give consent for any air rights project, T-station. The only one that's, does not touch the case for
Okay, great, thank you, Mr. Walker. So it's been referred to committee. Do we have a second, we have a second from Counselor Liang, that he referred to ordinance to be all in favor? Close. The I S A P, the next item, Madam Clerk.
I think four, 2016-249, Ordinance Committee Title 17, For A New Center, 8.1, Title Transit Oriented Forces.
Is the mayor's representative prepared to speak to this? The Chair recognizes Mr. Walker.
Through you, Mr. Ken, I believe just about all of the bases that were going to be covered on this side have been covered previously. I said pretty much, I think I was going to say.
It's a council question. So this is referred ordinance, the motion from, to refer to a ordinance, so moved by Counselor Harris, seconded by Counselor Liang. That, 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 that will be scheduled later. Thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Next item is 2016-25J, for $500 from Beagroo Inc. to the Smays, Chair of the Hall, Attorney.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Paul. Is the Mayor's Representative prepared to stipulate that? The Chair recognizes Mr. Walker.
Through you, Mr. King, I believe just about all of the bases that were going to be covered in this document, previously, I said pretty much everything I was going to say to Counselor King's question.
So this is referred to ordinance, good motion to refer to ordinance. So it was moved by Counselor Harris, seconded by Counselor Lee. That report is open, that report of public hearing, if you want to, that will be scheduled later, please, thank you. Next item, that part.
Next item is two thousand sixteen, two five, chair, for five hundred dollars from the group Inc. to the mayors, chair and all.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Walker.
There's a move through on this, part for remind us, send a recognition as.
So we have a motion to approve from Counselor Walker, seconded by Counselor Lee. No discussion, if the court will call the law.
Alfer King.
Yes.
Alfer Pro. Alfer Vaughn.
Yes.
Alfer King.
Yes.
Alfer Harris.
Yes.
Alfer LaFores.
Yes.
Alfer Lee.
Yes.
Alfer Paul.
No.
Alfer Good.
If I could, I'd like to ask for a brief recess, if we could, just for a few moments here. Thank you.
Hi. How are you?
Good.
What are you doing?
I'm busy.
No, I don't think I'm.
Hold on a minute.
Yeah. All right. All right. We'll be back, thank you very much, Counselor King, for joining me in the committee, for your work commitment. Yes, Counselor Finn.
I just want to rectify one thing from a earlier presentation related to our Honore Kumu, and she asked in particular, and again, I forgot this as well, but Kumu wanted to know, there is actually going to be a Nuvali stamp dedication, October thirty first, eleven a.m., with Mayor Cole in the City Hall pub. So I just wanted to make everyone aware of that, so thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Finn, and congratulations to Kumu as well, thank you very much for your work in the city and for all that you do. All right, next item, Madam Park.
Next item is two thousand sixteen, two four six, ordinance, mandate China Shih, administration and personnel of maybe job description for the city.
Thank you very much, Madam Park. This is being introduced this evening as a way of housekeeping, as a way of recodifying some of the job descriptions and the administrative positions within the council office. We have obviously had some major changeover in the last couple of months, and for the good, we missed those who've moved on, but we thought it a good time to perhaps put some things in writing on maybe were different than in the past twenty years. So we just, this is by way of recodifying, again, those job descriptions as they have been in the past understood and what we understand them to be today moving forward, so. So we put this in the ordinance committee and ordinance advertising, there anyone who's been heard, anyone? Okay, great. I do second the word, okay, seconded by Counselor Harris, so this will be the ordinance committee, and I know we have to schedule a meeting this evening, so thank you. Next is the approval of the previous meeting minutes, the October third minutes should be before you. And at this time, all those in favor? All those against, great, the I S A B, meeting minutes have been approved. Communications and reports from the mayor, other city officers and city boards. Madam Park.
Thank you, I have one traffic to refer to ordinance and advertising, Ward one, Counselor LaFores, Handicap Parking at forty seven Marymount Road. I did have a seat.
Thank you, Counselor LaFores. Great, ordinance and advertising, yeah, ordinance, refer to ordinance made for advertising. Unfinished business from the proceeding meeting. Reports of committees, Counselor LaFores.
I'm sorry, I'm waiting for a question. Yeah, ordinance, right, for a, yeah. Right, the right, some traffic. Counselor for, in Ward one, House for twenty sixteen dash two forty one, Handicap Parking at seventy seven Wall Street, on since one, no, that address, the average would be described as a, I think, I also would go forward with that in the positive recommendation.
Motion, Counselor LaFores, seconded by Counselor Harris, on motion, Madam President.
Alfer King.
Yes.
Alfer Pro.
Yes.
Alfer Vaughn.
Yes.
Alfer King.
Yes.
Alfer Harris.
Yes.
Alfer Lee.
Yes.
Alfer Paul.
Yes.
Alfer King.
Yes.
Alfer Harris.
Yes.
Alfer Lee.
Yes.
Alfer Paul.
Yes.
Alfer King.
Yes.
Alfer Pro.
Yes.
Alfer Vaughn.
Yes.
Alfer King.
Yes.
Alfer Harris.
Yes.
Alfer LaFores.
Yes.
Alfer Lee.
Yes.
Alfer Paul.
Yes.
Alfer King.
Yes.
Alfer Pro.
Yes.
Alfer Vaughn.
Yes.
Alfer King.
Yes.
Alfer Harris.
Yes.
Alfer LaFores.
Yes.
Alfer Lee.
Yes.
Alfer Paul.
Yes.
Alfer King.
Yes.
Alfer Pro.
Yes.
Alfer Vaughn.
Yes.
Alfer King.
Yes.
Alfer Harris.
Yes.
Alfer LaFores.
Yes.
Alfer Lee.
Yes.
Alfer Paul.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
In Ward three, Counselor, twenty sixteen dash two forty two, at Handicap Parking at one ninety two Barrington Street, and a positive recommendation.
Motion by Counselor LaFores, seconded by Counselor Harris, on motion, Madam President.
Alfer King.
Yes.
Alfer Pro.
Yes.
Alfer Vaughn.
Yes.
Alfer King.
Yes.
Alfer Harris.
Yes.
Alfer LaFores.
Yes.
Alfer Lee.
Yes.
Alfer Paul.
Yes.
Alfer King.
Yes.
Alfer Pro.
Yes.
Alfer Vaughn.
Yes.
Alfer King.
Yes.
Alfer Harris.
Yes.
Alfer LaFores.
Yes.
Alfer Lee.
Yes.
Alfer Paul.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Also in Ward three, Counselor, twenty sixteen dash two forty three, at stops on President War Road intersection with Miami Road, and a positive recommendation.
Motion by Counselor LaFores, seconded by Counselor Harris, on motion, Madam President.
Alfer King.
Yes.
Alfer Pro.
Yes.
Alfer Vaughn.
Yes.
Alfer King.
Yes.
Alfer Harris.
Yes.
Alfer LaFores.
Yes.
Alfer Lee.
Yes.
Alfer Paul.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
In Ward four, Counselor, twenty sixteen dash two forty four, at Handicap Parking at sixty two Station Street, and a positive recommendation.
Motion by Counselor LaFores, seconded by Counselor Harris, on motion, Madam President.
Alfer King.
Yes.
Alfer Pro.
Yes.
Alfer Vaughn.
Yes.
Alfer King.
Yes.
Alfer Harris.
Yes.
Alfer LaFores.
Yes.
Alfer Lee.
Yes.
Alfer Paul.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
And finally, in Ward six, Counselor, twenty sixteen dash two forty five, at Handicap Parking at nineteen Island Road, and a positive recommendation. Motion by Counselor LaFores, seconded by Counselor Harris, on motion, Madam President.
Alfer King.
Yes.
Alfer Pro.
Yes.
Alfer Vaughn.
Yes.
Alfer King.
Yes.
Alfer Harris.
Yes.
Alfer LaFores.
Yes.
Alfer Lee.
Yes.
Alfer Paul.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Other reports from committees? Yes, Counselor Pro.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Prior to this evening's city council meeting, the Housing Committee held a hearing on Counselor two zero one six dash two two eight, which went through the city of Quincy Housing Production Plan, which the community made a positive recommendation.
So motion by Counselor Pro, seconded by Counselor Finn, did you want to speak on the motion?
Yes, Madam President.
Counselor Finn.
Again, I would like to thank, thank Community Development again for the presentation that went on earlier, and of course, I'm very conscious of the fact that committees in the whole are taped or filmed in terms of what goes on, but I almost wish that it had been based on the presentation that was given. In fact, it's partly the kind of regrets that it wasn't on the agenda in some ways. Whenever we talk about housing plan for the city of Quincy, immediately some reactions, people are thinking that, oh my gosh, here we go, what are we going to do? They think of it in terms of just housing projects or whatever, but in reality, housing plan is so critical in defining the type of community we want to be. And it's very important because it's more than just simply a plan, it's a tool that has to be in place as it relates to, given the forty B ordinance. Without that strategy, without that thought, without that planning in place, we leave ourselves vulnerable to all kinds of haphazard development that can come in. And quite honestly, oftentimes opens almost like pressure from other developers who, being objective, to develop a fourth of the housing, as much as to develop things the way they want them to be. So again, I want to commend Robert, the work that he did, Ashraun Glennon, and all the folks that are playing in the community development for putting this particularly forward. I think that what I'm hoping as we pass it this evening, that it become kind of a template for us in order to measure where we're going with this, because again, these components of that are kind of like, you know, Byron Russian, what did Byron Russian use this phrase? With so many of the homeless plans, it's their plans for plans. They don't really lay out what the tenants and the strategy and the resources they're going to be, I hope, specifically as it relates to things like affordable housing trust and like, that, that we use that strategically to meet some of our other objectives, including some of the work that was mentioned, and what's always been discussed here in terms of like and other things, but use in such ways to develop workforce housing, but also to make certain that we keep a balance for all kinds of housing in the community. So again, I'm going to go through this piece, and I'm sure most will, by more than again, to be clear, but I think it's a great step in breaking some work we make.
Thank you, Counselor Finn. Anyone else who's seen to be heard? Counselor Finn.
Very good, Finn, I do like to share the sentiment of thanking the Planning Department, thanking Rob for the amount of work that we made in this, creating this housing plan. It's not easy to plan out things so far in the future, but it's of the utmost importance to shape the city that we want in the future. If we don't do these, take on these tasks and planning ahead of time, we get stuck with things like forty B projects where they're just shoved into spots they don't belong, and housing is haphazard, and there's no rhyme or reason why things exist where they exist. And I commend the Planning Department for getting ahead of this and driving this conversation forward. It's very similar to what we did, and what Mayor Cole did when he first took office as mayor, in recodifying the city zoning boards. That was a Herculean effort to undertake. He did so, he appointed members to be on this zoning board task force, members of the community, and what they came up with was a zoning code that makes a lot of sense for the city of Quincy to, you know, limit dense development residential B neighborhoods, for instance. And I think that this kind of dovetails with what, with the work that we've done in the last ten years or so in the city of Quincy, with the zoning ordinance, the recodification of the zoning. We've said what we want built where. With the housing plan, we're saying what kind of housing we will need. We've already said for the most part where it can go, and now we're saying what we need, what do we need for housing as we move forward to remain the kind of city that we want to be, to have a city that's open to all folks of low income, middle income, and high income, a community that really appreciates and embraces diversity. And I think, I think you get that by doing things like this, and I'll certainly be voting for this. And I just wanted to commend the Planning Department and the folks involved in coming up with this plan for their forward thinking and, you know, driving this conversation about the city and the housing stock that we want to have moving forward. Any other person?
Thank you, Counselor Paul. Anyone else who's seen to be heard? All right, see no one else? Madam President, Alfer King.
Yes.
Alfer Pro.
Yes.
Alfer Vaughn.
Yes.
Alfer King.
Yes.
Alfer Harris.
Yes.
Alfer LaFores.
Yes.
Alfer Lee.
Yes.
Alfer Paul.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Mayor Cole.
Great, thank you very much, Madam President. Next, presentation of petitions and memorials for remonstrance, Justice Counselor, two.
State, take a second, that Oversight Committee, just want to let Counselor know that we have an Oversight Committee meeting scheduled for November sixteenth at six thirty P M. We will be discussing, debating, and I hope acting upon two thousand sixteen dash fifteen, which is Counselor Finn DuBonne's resolution regarding the underground economy and this classification of buildings on construction sites, and two thousand sixteen dash one thirty seven, authored by myself, commending title fifteen to add a new section entitled Wage Prevention. I've invited quite a few folks to that meeting, the way I anticipate moving forward on it is to allow, almost as if it's a public hearing, I guess it is a public hearing, to allow the folks from the public to come on, anyone who wants to comment on legislation. And I'm also inviting specifically some folks from what I see as both sides of the debate to weigh in and give us their take on whether or not they think the legislation will be helpful, what they think the city of Quincy can do, the city council can do in terms of addressing this issue. So I anticipate we'll have quite a few folks here that night, and.
Thank you, Counselor Paul. Presentations of petitions and memorials for remonstrance, anyone? Motion orders, resolutions? Scheduling committee meetings, public hearings? Yes, Counselor LaFores.
I believe we are going to have an ordinance committee meeting relative to the matters that we put in committee tonight on Thursday, November tenth. And, did you know the timeline, did you want to do six thirty or seven?
Public hearing, six.
Public hearing, six.
Public hearing, fifteen, relative to.
Pass the six, though.
And then six thirty, joint oversight in downtown, and then ordinance.
Ordinance.
Ordinance, the two forty eight. And then the seven thirty special city council meeting.
Okay. And then also for me, is we have amassed permanent transportation coming to Ward one and it's conflicting with your Oversight Committee, is going to be relative to the C Street corridor, we have that for November sixteenth at seven P M. I brought my list, so stay tuned for some details on that meeting as well.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else who's been scheduled for the meeting? All right, what about, so, okay, so everything has been, do I need to schedule this special council meeting? All right, so we're going to go ahead and specially, schedule a special city council meeting on two thousand sixteen dash two four seven, and two thousand sixteen dash two four nine, for seven thirty on the tenth of November. Madam, part of the committees, if you would put a lot of these dates together and sort them out to everyone, so everybody can have them on the same place. Yes, Counselor Paul.
Just in terms of the, in terms of the special city council meeting, it's only, and I'm not, I meant this is more of a question, it's only special because it's not a regularly scheduled, scheduled meeting on the charter, so all the same council rules would apply, it's not like a steel cage council meeting or anything, it's not regular.
How exciting, that might be, that unfortunate, you know.
But also anything on, anything pending in committee, could also come out still that night, it doesn't have to be, as long as it's been previously advertised, just as any council meeting would work, so I just, I only ask that because you said specially scheduled for these two.
So you're supposed to, Madam President, go ahead, say.
It is usually specific for a special.
No, no, only, only to Counselor Finn.
No, again, my understanding, any special meeting, I know the, I don't know if the council had an address, but my understanding, any meeting outside Ward there, the scheduled meetings, has to have a set agenda, so it's going to be critical to get the agenda out because it's only the matters that are on the agenda that can be considered in that set. So I think it's, I know there's a number, and making the point is that there's a number of important matters, we want to make certain that we can get the agenda out so people know.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Finn. Answer your question.
I have, yeah, I'll, I'll.
Anything else could be ordered, just to say, no, okay. All right, this time I'll understand, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn, Counselor Paul, it's yours in favor. Thank you.
I've always had a problem with that, I always thought we could do whatever, whatever we do.
So we can do nothing.
No, I know. Yeah, it's right.